I appreciate everyone's appointments. We had a really tight schedule here. We had a stormwater. We had a stormwater meeting right before this particular meeting, and I know that Councilmember Sandahl was running that meeting. So we're coming in right at the last minute here. Thank you for waiting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Sandahl.
Here.
Mayor Gotel.
Here.
And Councilmember Elliott is excused this evening.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Councilmember Elliott.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There's no one for the open forum? Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance up here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I ask the City Council for the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of March 12th, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we have some really great presentations. First, we have a presentation by the Center for Energy and Environment regarding the Home Energy Squad Program. I'm looking forward to that. We saw that at the HRA. If you would please come and up to the podium. Make sure the mic is on. Should be a green button on there.
Alright, thanks for having me here tonight to present. My name's Stacy Boots Camp. I'm the Outreach and Recruitment Coordinator for the Home Energy Squad Program and some of the other residential programs at the Center for Energy and Environment. So what I came to talk to, oh, this one goes so fast. What I came to talk to you all about tonight is a new program that's starting in Richfield. And I just wanted to invite you all to participate, and being the leaders of the community that you are, I wanted to just give you a heads up on what the program is all about, and just give you more information so you can share it with your neighbors and friends, and just know what it's all about. So the Center for Energy and Environment, for those of you who don't know, has been around for over 30 years. We have not only residential programs, but we also have commercial programs, public building programs, and we have a financing department to help people complete their energy efficiency projects. So I'm here tonight in part of our community outreach and education. So with our residential energy programs, we try to get out in the community as much as we can, and talk to people about how they can save energy in their homes, at their workplaces, in their places of worship. So we do have some other supporting programs. If you'd like to have someone come to your place of worship, or come to your workplace, I'd be happy to do that, or send one of my coworkers, and we can come and share some energy savings information with you guys. So the community engagement is a big part of it. Then we also have the home visits, where we have crews of people that come into the house, and tell you how you can save energy, and also install lots of products for you so you can save right away, and then give you recommendations for further savings and upgrades, and also information about financing and rebates. In addition to our home visits, we have follow-up resources available, so you can call us at any time, and we'll try to help you through any next steps or questions you have. And we also have a quality assurance program with our recommended contractors. So I'm just going to touch on these a little bit further. So we will be having a workshop that's coming up at the City Hall here. It's going to be on Saturday, May 4th, at 10:00 a.m. So if you know any people that would like to come and learn more about energy savings or the program, we'll be advertising that. So just heads up on that. So this kind of just goes over the home visit that is available to people now. So for a person who is not living in Richfield, say, for instance, if they lived in Plymouth, this visit would be $100. But the City of Richfield is very generously buying this down for the homeowners, the residents of Richfield. So it's only $50 cost to all you folks who live here. And it's really great value. Sometimes it's valued at over $400 visit. So there's lots of things installed, like door weather stripping, programmable thermostats, compact fluorescent light bulbs, water heater blankets. So whatever you need in your house to help your home become more energy efficient, our experts will do that. They'll also do a blower door test, and an attic insulation, and a wall insulation inspection, to figure out what you've got going on there, and make any recommendations for additional savings. And it all gets wrapped up in a nice report with next steps for people. So we really want to help people get to more energy savings after we leave the house as well. So that's, this is just a little visual of the front page of the report. So there's a home energy score that gets assigned to the house, which is always interesting. It's like a home energy report card, so that's kind of fun. And all the steps are outlined in here. I mentioned there's follow-up and financing assistance. So by participating in this program, residents have access to a 0% home energy loan. And there are also rebates that come with some of these upgrades, like attic insulation, air sealing, wall insulation. And the City of Richfield is also very generously offering an additional $100 rebate for attic and wall insulation. So that's really great for people to take advantage of, and continue saving in the future. And this is just some information about our contractor program. So a lot of times, people don't know who to call for insulation, and it's not really something that you're going to go and check out if they did properly, like a kitchen remodel. So we have a quality installation program, and contractors go through this program, and they get certified, and then they get put on a list, and we check up on their projects. So there's a lot of quality assurance there, and we like to make sure that people are getting good service. So we've had a, our program has been around since 2009. It's just coming to Richfield. So we're really excited about it expanding outside of Minneapolis. And we've had some really good feedback. 99% of people said they would recommend it to a friend. So it's really a fun program. And if you all do want to be an early adopter and sign up, I've got information on that table. A little flyer that looks kind of like this, that you can grab, and just give our schedule or a call if you would like to take advantage of the program. So thank you all for your time tonight, and we're really excited to be working with the City of Richfield on this.
Councilmember Sandahl.
And I just wanted to be one of the 99% that said I would recommend it. They did come to visit me. I was one of their early guinea pigs in Richfield. And it was an excellent program. They're very, very competent at what they do. And what, you know, I paid my $50, and I'm sure I got $100 or more in the CFL light bulbs. So you can hardly lose on this one. It's a money-making venture to do it. In addition, they put weather stripping on my back door, which I've been thinking about doing for 15 years, and it got done while they were there. That was wonderful. Highly recommend it.
Thank you. And I'm sure there'll be links on the website, up at City, on the City website, too. So those folks who are interested in it can go up and take a peek at that. And also, you can always call the City Hall here and find out more information. So that was great. Thank you for coming today. Next, we have a presentation of the 2012 Food Safety Awards by the Richfield Advisory Board of Health. This has been quite a few years we've been doing this, and this is always exciting because we have some, we have newer restaurants coming into town, too. So it's always exciting to see who wins the awards, and I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer Tarantino, Co-Chair of the Richfield Advisory Board of Health. And this is one of the really fun things that we do every year. This is the seventh year that we're doing it. The Richfield Food Safety Awards are meant to acknowledge excellence in food safety and service, with a focus on what's being done well in our restaurants. The health inspector, Jessica Jutz, right here, from Bloomington Public Health, nominates three to four candidates in three risk categories based on food collaborative interviews and inspection results. The categories are full-service restaurant, fast-food pizza carryout cafeteria service, and retail grocery. A team of interviewers from the Richfield Bloomington Food Collaborative then visited each of the sites and conducted interviews. Among the criteria used in judgment were how they manage risk factors on a daily basis, a description of food safety training policies, and the management's overall commitment to food safety. Tonight, we're happy to tell you who the nominees in the categories were, and the winners. In the full-service restaurant category, the nominees were Don Paplos, Fred Babcock, VFW Post, Minneapolis Richfield, Richfield American Legion Post. And the winner in the full-service restaurant category is Houlihan's Restaurant and Bar. Heather Betts is here today to receive it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the fast-food pizza carryout and cafeteria category, the nominees were Jimmy John's Gourmet Sandwiches, Subway West, Arby's Restaurant. And the winner in the category is Wendy's Four Crown. Manager Troy Brown is here tonight to accept the award. In the retail grocery category, the nominees were Lund's, and the winner, Target Store. And they're not represented tonight. We'll see.
This is so wonderful. First of all, thank you for doing this work. I know there's a lot of background work we don't even know about, all the work behind the scenes that you folks do. You know, looking at the restaurants, seeing how clean lean is, how their service is, things. Thank you.
It's an exciting project for us.
Yeah, it is. It's wonderful. And also, for those of you, thank you, managers who showed up here. It's so nice to see you. Folks have been and helped the community of Richfield a lot. I know some of you personally, and you've helped out in projects and giving to the community, to our nonprofits. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you for being a great restaurant here. I'm really looking forward to this. The other thing is, I can tell you, is this goes up on our website, so we're going to advertise you for the great work that you do. This is free advertising up on the screen here, and also on our website. So thank you very much for the things you do for us. Any comments? Any other comments? I think this is one of them. This is council discussion. Tom?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll probably go over to the podium because I got one graphic I want to show. Okay, what I'm going to be reporting on is I was at the Noise Oversight Committee last Wednesday. Got an update on what's happening as a representative in Richfield for noise, and I'll just kind of go over everything and explain the graphic here. We went over the summary report for the airport, and the graphic you're seeing here is actually, if you look at the top, in 2007, they forecasted what the operations would be at the Minneapolis International Airport. And in 2012, they actually did an actual study of what the noise is and what the operations are. And I know people won't believe it, but actual 2012 operations number of the airport was a total of 424,928 operations. It sounds like a lot, but this actually represents a 20, 27% reduction from the 2007 forecast of mitigated total operations. The number was expected to be 582,366. Scheduled passenger air carrier and cargo operations accounted for the majority of the reduction. However, it should be notable that 98.2% was the charter operations, which went down. So we're actually seeing a smaller footprint. If you look at this here, the orange is what they forecasted. The dark or black is actually what they measured. So we're seeing that it is shrinking. Part of this is due to what's happened with mergers, the type of aircraft. And the report we're getting now from the MAC is that what's happening is they're putting more people and less metal, because a lot of the air carriers are going to bigger aircraft and less operations. And with the mergers, you had some airlines that were going to the same destination where they shrunk how many aircraft are going to that destination. Other items that happened, we did allow Edina to get in as an at-large member. People were, they had requested that. They had requested a full membership, but they came in under an at-large membership. Trying to figure out what else. And we'll also be looking at the 2020 improvement plans to see what's going on there. And then we'll talk about mitigation of consent decree at that time, where things are going. But we're looking at the numbers, and they're going down. I know it doesn't make people pleased that are hearing the noise. We're still working on the RNAV project. That will not go away. We're harping on that strongly. Every meeting I go to, I talk about it, talk with the FAA. I did put the question out there with the sequestration, whether this was going to hurt anything. According to Chad Leckvie, who is our NAC representative, this stuff is already in queue, and it's a different type of program, so it shouldn't slow anything down that they're aware of. But who knows what the FAA will do, because they're closing towers in Minnesota and that, where their resources will go. So as far as we know, we're docketed for probably 2015 before we see that RNAV procedure come in, which is way too late. But we're, we've had Jeff Hamel and some other people send a letter to the FAA saying, can we at least get the study done? Can we get everything ready to go, if you want to call it shovel-ready, for 2014? So maybe we'll have a magic implementation at that point. I know the mayor's done some work for us to try to move it along other avenues, too. But that's kind of my report from the NAC. Are there any questions from the council?
At one point, I read something about, they were talking about a partial implementation. They're not considering any implementation right now?
What the partial, what happened is, on November 19th, we had our big meeting, and we were, a lot of us were over there. And what happened is there was some groups from Minneapolis and Edina that didn't understand the RNAV in it, and wanted more time to research it. And so what happened is the proposal by the MAC was to do a partial implementation. That is going forward, but when you talk to the FAA, they want all or none. It's kind of like, they want to, when they go to RNAV procedures, they don't want one group of pilots trying to do it this way, and another group trying to do it the other way. The partial implementation would be toward the east, the one ways we call one-two-right, one-two-left, which would benefit Egan and them, and they, we're not going to hold them up. And they're, let it go forward, because if they do implement that, it can't hurt us, because they'll still have data. They'll still have items we can use for the other side. And again, the FAA is leaning more toward, they'd rather see it all implementation versus none. So we're encouraging it to go forward, in hopes that they'll see their ways, and it will be implemented.
Councilmember Chu, I know that we have Pinnacle Airlines coming in here, so again, that increases, and as this airport is scheduled to grow, I would see that we would probably fill out those contours. Is that your thoughts?
Yeah, it could be possible. One thing that does help is we've gotten away from the noisy aircraft. We used to call them hush kit, and I believe there's one DC-9 that was in operation all of last year that, you know, is around. So we're seeing more of the newer Stage III quieter aircraft, better performance, that are at the airport. And that's partial for the shrinking of the noise, is because of the newer aircraft are that much quieter. So we may still see that shrink, even though we have more airlines coming in because they're quieter. There's also talk with the RNAV that that's implemented to go higher faster. So that would help a lot of us, because most of the noise would be contained at the airport. And by the time to get to Richfield, maybe we wouldn't be able to see the pilot's eyes and know what color they are.
See if they've washed the plane today. I know.
Or waved the passengers.
I want to thank you, because you've been quite the champion for us here, and I appreciate, and you've kept me very well informed about what's going on, so that I could also be assistance when I'm in DC. So thank you so much for the hard work you do.
You're welcome.
At this time, I would ask council to approve the agenda. Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
I just wanted to put a flyer up overhead, so that people who are interested would be aware that the Arts Commission is sponsoring three different locations for exhibits. And the top version is Carol Lowell. She's at, putting an exhibit of watercolor paintings at the Community Center. On the lower left is Mary Kaplanger, who's doing a mixed media in watercolors, and that's at Hope Church. And on the right, lower right, we have Soon Squires. And the art from Soon is at the Richfield Municipal Center, so it's in our building here. And it's a variety of work in different medias. So anyone who's interested in art may want to take a look if you're in any of those buildings, or just come to visit.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember, did you, Duena Garcia, did you have anything to add to the council discussion?
Well, I was just going to mention that the League of Women Voters did their garbage hauler issue last Saturday. And it was just, I think it was a full house. But I wanted to commend the Community Services Commission, because I don't know how many, I think we must have had at least half of the commission members here. So, and it was just very well attended and very informative, and thanks to the League.
Yeah, it's very nice. And it was nice to be able to use this new City Hall.
Absolutely.
Yes. I did want to say that one thing is, is that I talked to a couple of people who sit on the Housing Visioning Task Force, and I'm sure we'll get an update. But they had very positive things to say about the meetings, and there are other members of it. They thought it was a great diverse group. They thought they were getting a lot of good information, and that this was going to be a really great process. So it's nice when somebody comes up and you get that kind of feedback. It's nice to share it. I'll ask for council approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry, I believe you have item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number five on the agenda is a consideration of a second reading for an ordinance amending the dimensional requirements for commercial parking stalls and drive aisles. City staff continually monitors and notes areas of the zoning code that may require review. Public Works staff has identified deficiencies in the city's parking lot design standards. In one case, a parking lot built according to the existing permitted dimensions would be physically impossible to maneuver within. They're talking about the 13-foot drive aisles for 90-degree parking stalls. Staff has proposed the following changes to improve safety and maneuverability. To propose, the proposal is based on our view of local and national standards. Now, I don't know if Melissa wants to come up, explain this mouthful of what we're actually doing. I didn't mean to put her on the spot, but maybe she can explain a lot better than I do.
Good evening, council. These are fairly minor changes, primarily to drive aisles. The example that's given in the staff report of the 13-foot drive aisle and the 90-degree parking stall, if you'll imagine your vehicle is probably 16 feet on average in length, and if you're trying to back out of a parking stall into a 13-foot drive aisle, and there's parking on the opposite side, you're not going to be able to get out of there. So Public Works noticed that. We updated that one, and made a few other minor tweaks to increase the drive aisles in the 60-degree and 45-degree modules, and to reduce it actually for parallel parking. So they're fairly minor changes. They won't apply to any parking lots in place now, but new developments going forward would need to meet these standards. And to be honest, most developments that come in go by, have 90-degree stalls, they're 9x19, and they have the 24-foot drive aisle. So this, even if we were to retroactively try to implement this, it wouldn't change much.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa?
No.
Then, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the second reading of an ordinance amending subsection 544.13, subdivision 3 of the city code relating to parking lot design requirements.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, you have the next item.
Okay, this is, we're going to be considering a number of items related to the proposed plan unit development that will include 151-unit apartment building, 11,600 square feet of retail restaurant space, and outdoor activity area in coordination with the future adjacent retail development at 6330, 6400, and 6430 Lindale Avenue. The Lindale Garden site has been vacant since 2006, and naturally, in between, we've had some problems with that site in terms of, you know, people breaking in, maybe a little criminal activity, what have you. But the comprehensive plan, this, the proposed property is located in what the comprehensive plan calls the downtown area. And this will include, as I stated before, just a mix of residential, shopping, recreational, and business uses. Later on, we will, okay, let's see, the current, I've got to take my glasses off so I can read. The current proposed plan unit development is divided into two primary sections for which two separate developers will apply for approval. And that will be Cornerstone, and then the Lake Winds Natural Foods. The current request involved the rezoning of all of the land involved. The current request involved the rezoning of all of the land involved in the project and the specific land use proposal for the northern portion of the site. Consideration of these approvals depend on an understanding of the agreements that will be in place between the two site halves and the coordination between this northern portion of the site and the future development of the south portion. The Cornerstone Group, who is the initial developer, is proposing a mixed-use development that includes 151 units. It's a six-story apartment building, 11,600 square feet of restaurant retail space, and other public amenities. Proposed lakeside amenities include a performance space that will have built-in seating, new connections to the existing Richfield Lake Walking Path, gardens, a splash pad, and an outdoor pizza oven that can be enjoyed by the general public. The development will also include a market area, and that will be where the farmer's market will be held on Wednesday. And of course, the Saturday market will be held at Vets Park as per usual. The development will be built to coordinate and share parking and access with the future Lake Winds Natural Foods co-op. In 2008, the city approved designation of the entire lakes at Lyndale area as a mixed-use area that would allow a variety of uses, including high-density residential, commercial office, and recreation. And I know that one of the main concerns has been the parking. And the developer did commission an independent parking study that would help, you know, qualify, quantify daily in event-related parking needs. Staff also conducted an analysis based on code requirements. Both evaluations are based on shared parking amongst the co-op retail and surface residential parking areas and limiting restaurant space to 2,600 square feet. And I know that they have considered valet parking and having traffic police personnel there to work the traffic. And they have a good, what appears to be a good parking management project at hand. And they have, in fact, estimated the cost of hiring or incorporating the three different scenarios here, you know, and estimated how much it would cost using either one or two of these people per event. So I don't have any more to say, but I do want to, I do want to say hats off to the developer who, from the very beginning, solicited public input and brought the project to the city, worked with city staff, and the city staff who made sure that, you know, that residential voices were heard. And we certainly appreciate that. I think city staff has also heard that the parking is going to be something that, you know, we were going to be concerned about, and I think that they've moved ahead and tried to accommodate the cornerstone. But at the same time, you know, I think that they have made sure that, you know, you do comply with what the city needs. So the staff is to be commended also for the hard work that they have put into this. Like I said before, this is a project that, since the very beginning, public scrutiny is something that, you know, they haven't been afraid of, and we've appreciated working to make this development happen. And I want to congratulate you ahead of time. So, okay.
City manager, would you like to add a few things or?
Yes, thank you. Because this is such a long technical staff report, I'm going to ask our city planner, Melissa Paleman, to go over and talk about some other issues in here that staff would feel are important and just make sure that the council and the public hear and understand, and the folks here from the developer as well.
Thank you. Pardon me. Maybe I'll start with the parking, since Councilmember Garcia brought that up. As she mentioned, we did ask the developer to have an independent parking study done, and that was to quantify both the daily needs and event-related, so both farmer's market and potential events for the performance area. Additionally, staff reviewed the proposal based on our code requirements. And just to summarize what we found, both evaluations found that on a daily basis, requirements are met. There will be excess parking in a shared, in a shared capacity. The residential component is 14 stalls short of our typical requirement. However, the retail components far exceed our requirements. And so the anticipation is that those retail folks who do not have a space in the evening would be able to come over when there's less demand in the retail center and be able to park there. The times when staff is, has minor concerns is during the farmer's market, and that, of course, depends on the success of the farmer's market. The excess parking on the north half of the site alone disappears with the farmer's market. However, there is still excess at the co-op. So people would be able to park at the co-op potentially and walk over to the farmer's market. We also anticipate that in this location, the farmer's market is going to get a lot more bike and pedestrian traffic than they did at the other satellite location at the church.
Assumption.
Assumption, thank you. So that's our analysis of the parking. Again, like Councilmember Garcia mentioned, the performance space is kind of a separate issue. There is a condition in the approval that there has to be a parking plan in place that city staff has approved to deal with the additional parking requirements when there would be a performance taking place. Are there any questions about?
Sounds like there's some contingencies here, so people are thinking ahead. That's what we really want to hear about.
There are a number of contingencies. There are contingencies related to parking. There are contingencies related to the approval of Lake Winds. As we have, we've seen conceptual plans now. We have a fairly good estimate of what that parking will be. If that does not, if something would fall through on that side, these approvals would not be granted. In fact, the zoning changes will not even be published and effectuated until Lake Winds has been approved. Additionally, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. We'll be rezoning the property. It's rezoning from planned general commercial to planned mixed use. That's because there's such a large residential component and public amenity component. There is a small area that will be rezoned to single-family residential. I just want to point out that that is kind of an anomaly, a little area that comes out into the lake is part of this property. That will be corrected during the plating process, and that land will be dedicated to the city and zoned single-family residential, just like all of our other parks. It doesn't indicate that we'll be developing the lake for single-family residential.
Housing on stilts?
Right.
Housework.
Just a few other items. There are some variations from code standards here. Most are related to the fact that the lake and the park are behind, and the developer, rightly so, wants to take advantage of those things for the residential and for the public amenities. The building height, there's, they're asking for a variation in terms of building height. The minimum required in this district is two stories. While the residential component is six, the retail components are only one story. As we've already discussed, the parking, to add a second story to this wouldn't, we don't have the parking to support it. The other very important item is step backs and shadows. Buildings over 50 feet are required to be stepped back from the property lines to avoid creating shadows and monolithic facades adjacent to single-family properties. This building is 69 feet tall, so it exceeds that, but it does not step back. The monolithic facade is not an issue here. You can see on the elevations that are included in your packet that the architectural detail on the north side of the building is the same as it is on all of the other sides. The shadows, however, there is a shadow study also in your packet. The shadows created to the north during the winter are fairly substantial. However, in the summer, they really only affect the two properties immediately to the north. City staff sent individual letters to those property owners with a copy of the shadow study, asking them for feedback. Both of those owners attended the public hearing before the planning commission and spoke. They did have some concerns about the shadows, but they did not indicate that they did not want this project to go forward. They were supportive. One of the homeowners was going to meet with the developer after the meeting to talk about some additional possible fence treatments and items like that, and maybe they could speak to that tonight. We have not heard anything else from those owners. We believe that they are satisfied, and it would be the council's discretion to allow this despite the shadows. One resident spoke at the public hearing who was opposed to the development. She did not feel that it was in keeping with the area. She felt that it was too dense adjacent to single-family homes, and she lived, she lives across the street behind the new Lyndale Plaza building. She had concerns about construction noise and parking as well. And I think that concludes staff's summary. If you have questions about additional items, I'd be happy to address those.
So the residents behind the Lyndale Station area, that Lyndale area, is it because they're concerned about people parking on their street during the construction process?
It was behind the Lyndale Plaza, the apartments, right? And no, I don't think it was, they did have concerns about the entire construction process. Yes, that resident did. Noise, time of construction, parking of construction vehicles, yes. She also had concerns about overflow parking from the development in their neighborhood.
Okay, I mean, we have before actually put residential parking signs up for, I mean, we can watch this as anybody approached her about.
With construction, absolutely. And with this particular project, the way it's going to be phased, I don't believe that construction parking in the neighborhood would be a problem because of the way that this development will take place. But yes, we could certainly watch it, and if it becomes a problem, we could absolutely deal with that.
Thank you. And did the developer want to come up and talk about the, some of the concerns? Did you have a question?
I just always think visuals are wonderful, so I hope you'll share some with us.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's nice to be here tonight. Thanks for having us again. Perhaps I can show you a few more pictures. This is the site plan.
I didn't interrupt, you got to talk to the mic.
Maybe state your name so they know. You'd think I'd been here enough to know. I'm Colleen Carey. I'm the president of the Cornerstone Group. I have with me Mike Kuntz from Cunningham Group Architects and Dale Woodbeck from Lake Winds Natural Foods Co-op. So we are here to answer your questions primarily, but I'll run through these, a couple of site plans and elevations for you. The one that you see right now is the revised site, well, the newest site plan. I'm not sure that there's any significant revisions, except that the people look like ants now. But you can see where the Lake Winds co-op is with their parking down to the south of them. One of the things that I'd like to point out about the parking situation is that Lake Winds has about 112 spaces of parking for themselves, which I think is actually more than adequate for their needs. But in addition, we have this little undefined square down here, which is an outlot, basically, that we haven't, we don't have any plans to develop at this time. So we feel like it's a little bit of something in our back pockets for all of us to help address parking problems if they come up over time. So we're not planning to pave this. We're not planning to park there unless we need to, but we do feel like it's a little bit of an insurance policy that helps us to address these parking concerns. Although, I have to say, I think that we have adequate parking for most of what we're doing. We've always said from the beginning that we would need to do something special for events, and we will, and they will have to be, that'll have to be done on a case-by-case basis. Some of the events might happen later in the evening when the co-op is closed, and so there's plenty of parking. Other things might happen during the day when we need a different kind of a plan. We're actually hoping to make it kind of fun for people to come here, and so we're hoping we'll get lots of bikes and pedestrians, but also that we might have events where we would have a trolley or a shuttle or some bike pedicabs that are moving people around. So we've investigated a number of options for how we would do special event parking, and we're pretty confident that there are a variety of manageable solutions. And if all that fails, either we don't have events, or we start to talk about how we might use this southernmost lot to help in some way.
Or there's also businesses around there that might accommodate as well.
Yes, that's part of what we have already considered, is that there would be some businesses that might help. So if you don't have any questions on the site plan, I'll just flip to something else. This is a new elevation of the, this is looking from the Lyndale Avenue side towards the L of the building, so the lake is on the backside there. And then this show, this is one that you haven't seen before. This is looking across where the stage is right here, towards the apartment building. And so the lake is off to the left. This is some of the seating around the stage, and then the, to the right, where you see the runner, and then to the right of that is also part of the plaza where we'll have some parking flowing through there. That's this area. Oops, sorry, right here. So there will be parking in there, but there will also be a kid's splash pad separate, separate from the parking. So that's an elevation you haven't seen before. This is an elevation from the lake, which is not dissimilar to what you have seen in the past, perhaps a little more detail. And then this is our first attempt, I think, at showing you what the gardens might look like. We're really hoping to have a pretty beautiful garden space down here that will have a focus on edible foods, and we're talking to some farmers and some restaurant owners and some, and hopefully the co-op will have an interest in participating in this. So between the farmer's market, the local food at the co-op, and then what we're going to grow here and the kinds of things we're hoping to do, we think it's going to be a great place for some good, healthy eating. And then this, this isn't quite right, but I'll show it to you anyhow. This driveway that you see in the foreground isn't really there, but what we're trying to show is this is the backside of the buildings, the side that faces the single-family homes to the north. But really, this driveway is more like what is shown on the site plan, which you can't see very well, but there's, back here in the corner, there's a fire truck exit out, but there isn't any other access out into that neighborhood. So this drawing makes it look like there's a nice, big, wide driveway that's going out into that neighborhood, and that is not the case. We will just have pavers and a way for fire trucks to get through.
Do you have another one with the streetscape at the front of it? From the street side, across the street from Lyndale?
The street side, no. I mean, the, our building, the housing part of the project will look like this from the street. We don't have the retail.
Actual street in there, streetscape. I mean, that's pretty.
Right. We're still working on that with the co-op. We, this, this is their building, and this one is ours. We will be building our retail building right up against theirs, and so we're kind of waiting on them for some design ideas so that we can make sure that our piece, because right along this edge, they're right up next to each other. So we want some consistency there along the street. I know that for the mayor and for me personally, it's really important that we have a really strong presence there on the street. Another thing that we have changed a little bit in this site plan to also help with that is we've reoriented this open-air market space a little bit. If you recall from previous plans, it was actually two parking bays wide, but not running the whole length. And this way, we'll be able to put a longer, thinner structure right up on the street to kind of anchor that space a little bit and have more activity along that street front.
Is there a transit stop there?
Yes, there is.
And where is that?
Well, right now, it's on this corner, so the south corner of the entrance. We've actually been having some conversations about whether it could move to the north and be a part of the solar cover. And so we've actually had some conversations with folks about making it an electric car charging station and a bus stop and the solar panel up above. So it could be a great little interesting area there with hopefully an artist design component to that.
Oh, that would, that sounds lovely. Wonderful.
So.
Questions, comments?
I just have a comment for those folks that have contacted me regarding the ban shell issue. I just wanted to say that right now, you know, we're going to take care of the issue at hand. And if and when the ban shell does come, you know, it's so premature right now, but when that issue does come up and a decision is made, it will certainly be made, you know, with all kinds of public information, and I don't think the staff is. with all kinds of public information, and I don't think the staff is going to let, you know, the parking issue and, and a number of things happen without going through the public, going through the council, seeking all kinds of active participation from the residents affected. So I'm confident that that's going to be the case, and so I would say to these folks is that let's wait as the process kind of unveils itself, that we work on it at that, at that time and not, you know, and not make too many assumptions.
And, and just a reminder to the public that the community services has come up with the idea of having concerts at at least three locations in the city to see how the noise is.
Right.
One would be at this site, another would be at the Veterans Park, and the third would be at Oxford Park.
Right.
So we'll have an opportunity for people to go and listen themselves and see what kind of an impact the concerts make.
And at that time, maybe we can have Councilmember Fitz Hendry give us more information so we can make a better, better decision. But the decision will not be based on necessarily that. I think there's a lot of different components that have to be weighed and measured, so we'll, I, I'm confident we'll do the right thing.
Please. There's been some conversation. Not asking for any money for a ban shell. We are building what we are proposing to build without any assumption that there would be additional money or a ban shell. If somewhere down the road we all decide that that makes sense, we're open to that conversation, but we're not asking for that. We're not dependent on that, and if the city decides that it's in their best interest to build a ban shell someplace else, you know, I might, I might be disappointed because it would be fun to have all that action at the Garden Center, but I think there's lots to, to figure out about how that could all work. And we're happy to have the conversation, but we don't have any assumption that anybody's giving us any money for a ban shell, or that there's something that you're giving up for us that we're just ready to be in the process with you guys.
Good, I appreciate that.
Thanks, it's great input.
Do you need to hear anything from Dale Woodbeck?
On the Lakewins?
On the co-op, yeah. He's here to answer questions if necessary, otherwise.
I hear you just can't have that fast enough, because everybody's looking forward to having that co-op here. I guess I would ask, does he have anything more he'd like to share? If not, fine. There we go. Just keep promoting your business every time you get an opportunity.
My name's Dale Woodbeck with Lakewins, and all I can say, I think, is that we're proceeding as quickly as we can. Design plans are underway. We expect to be in with our proposal soon for the, for the PUD, and then in front of the planning commission, and then in front of you folks a couple of times, with the objective of getting in the ground sometime this summer.
Yeah, all right.
So it's weird to think about, we'd like to be in and enclosed before the snow flies, and it's just strange to think about that at this particular time of year.
Late spring, yes.
So we'll just hope for a very long summer and a very long fall.
Okay.
And I'll answer any questions, but that's, we are proceeding quickly.
Okay, good. All right, any questions? All right, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
So Mayor, I move that we do two things. Number one, approve the ordinance rezoning the properties at 6330 and 3400 and 3430 Lyndale Avenue from general commercial and planned general commercial to planned mixed use and single-family residential. And two, that we approve an attached resolution approving the final development plans and conditional use permit to allow a planned unit development comprised of a 151-unit apartment building, 9,000 square feet of retail space, 2,600 square feet of restaurant space, and outdoor activity areas in coordination and agreement with a future adjacent retail development.
I'll second. Is there other comments or discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank you for coming tonight. That was very nice and very informative. At this time, we have a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I've got a few things to, to talk about this evening. First of all, just a reminder that on April 1st, there will be a concurrent meeting between the city council and the Bridgefield Independent School District Board, and that's going to be at the school district boardroom. And I believe that starts when, Cheryl? Is that a, that's a 6 o'clock start? Right, because they've got a meeting after that, I believe. Secondly, the goal session that we worked on, the, the goals that came out of that, I, we put them together, that is, staff has put them together. I will be giving them to you in form of a council memo. It'll come out in your Thursday packet. If you would please take a look at those. And first of all, you'll see that there's a lot of them. And I would ask you to take a, you know, to take a good, close read through them and make sure that we picked up just generally on the kinds of things that we've talked about, or your recollection is of what we've talked about. I don't, I don't think I've got a ton of really, really, really specific things in there, but, but I think there's enough of the general statements of what everyone was looking for to, to capture what, what folks saw as their primary goals for this year and for, and for the immediate future. If you think we've missed something, would you pencil it in, let me know? And then I'm going to ask you to do a rating system of what you believe, and because there are so many goals, I'm not going to ask that council members rate them from one to however there, many there are, but rather I would ask that you do it in a summary format, that you would indicate a number one for what you believe are the highest, most immediate priority goals, a number two for those more intermediate, and then three for more long-term. Because you'll see that with all the goals that we have listed, it would be an immense undertaking for us to do to start with, but, you know, everything on there is important, and we will make an attempt to, to hit all of those at some point in time, but want your input on what you think are the highest priority. Once I get that back, then we'll, we'll put that back together, and we'll get together again, maybe in a study session or something, and, and sort those out one last time, and we'll be ready to go.
Okay.
If I can suggest that we make three the heaviest, most important, two moderate, and one least important, because zero should be less than one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Point well taken, so we'll just reverse that, and, yeah, we'll take care of that. I want to do one more thing, and I'm going to step up to the podium because I want to put something up, so if you can bear with me for a second. Okay, I want to talk about a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to talk about the garbage, garbage can ordinance that the city council passed last year, and maybe if I can get the control room to pull this in just a little bit tighter, this, this picture, yeah, there, okay, that's great. We'll be putting a lot of publicity out about this in probably the next few weeks. The problem, of course, that we saw that the city council dealt with is where do people put their garbage cans? And we don't like the fact that this, if this area here is the street in front of the home, that garbage cans be placed anywhere in front of the, of the building. And we ran into an issue where if you have a home where the part of the building sticks out in front of the rest of the house, you could tuck a garbage can away next to that little corner, and it would have, technically, we didn't have a way to, to get you to move the garbage can. That's been changed. And so I'm not going to try to explain all the specifics of it, but first of all, anyone can find this on our, on our website. We'll, we can send out paper copies of this if somebody wants to take a look at it, and we will be putting out all kinds of PSAs on this, again, in the next, next several months. But garbage cans are allowed in the backyard, screened on the side of the house, and so that, so that the cans are not visible from the street, and that's the whole idea. The biggest thing was making sure cans aren't in front, in the front line of the house. And this is all, if you've got to build an enclosure or something, or build a screen, folks have gotten until June to get, to get that done, and hopefully the snow will eventually leave, although it's staying a little longer than I thought, but we'll be putting that out to folks, so making sure that folks get time to, to comply, and then we'll be out there looking carefully to see that folks are complying. So that's one thing coming up. Second thing coming up is.
Just a question.
Yeah.
If I may ask.
Sure.
We had the issue come up, if they are a corner house.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any difference if they're a corner house now to this graphic on where them cans can be?
There is, council member, but I don't have the specifics in front of me, and I'm going to, and I'm not going to be able to do a good job of explaining it, but thanks for bringing it up. There are special circumstances for a corner house, and we have, we have that available for, for people. We'll include that in the information that we put out.
Thank you.
But good point, thank you. Now, the other aspect of, of this kind of a subject matter is that we are getting the snow melting now, and by the looks of the weather forecast, a lot of it might be gone within the next maybe 10 days. That means that all the kinds of things that people haven't seen for the last little while, and that is people haven't maintained their yards, you know, those kinds of issues, debris in the yard, improperly stacked wood, all of those kinds of things are going to come to the forefront again. What we are going to do as staff is we're going to make a very, very concerted effort to get this information out to the public in a lot of ways that we haven't done in the past. Making sure that people understand what's expected of them in terms of maintaining their, their yards, their homes, and, and then do our, our very best again to go out there, especially early in the year, to try and educate those folks who are, who haven't gotten the message. And, you know, one thing, one plea I will make again to the public, if you see someone in your neighborhood, whether it's a house that's vacant, or the, the grass isn't being maintained, isn't being mowed, or there's weeds in the yard, or there's something that, that doesn't make you feel like it's appropriate for the kind of neighborhood that you want your neighborhood to look like. I mean, if someone's not keeping up their property, you can notify us by phone, you can do it over the internet. It is, it is absolutely guaranteed that the person whose property is subject will not find out who lodges the, the notice or the complaint to us. That will not be disclosed in any way, shape, or form, so people don't have to worry about that. But the fact that we have people in the neighborhoods who are most familiar with who's complying with city ordinances in terms of keeping up their, their yards, their properties, their homes, a lot better than we can do by, by riding through the neighborhoods, it would help us a great deal if people would let us know. And again, what we would do when someone makes, gives us that notification, is we would send our own people out to take a look at it and verify to see if there was an ordinance being broken or not. So it would be a great help to the city, to city staff, if people would do that, and again, feel assured there is no way that the city of Richfield is going to disclose who has filed that piece of information with us. So with that, I thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Anything else, city manager? Okay. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no further business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.